First thing on the agenda is to revise if necessary. There is a revision. After the approval of minutes, we're gonna have a public comment session. Does anyone else have any other... Alright, has everyone got a copy of the minutes from our last meeting? I mean a motion and review. Now a motion for approval, one second. Anytime. Alright, I'll watch that.
Something to read to you when you're in the middle of your class. Read the number two on the second page.
Maybe I'm reading wrong.
Yeah, that's the subdivision. You that would have flagged or not. Do you have a copy of the minutes too? I should have.
No, I'm good with them. I'm reading wrong.
Okay, I got one.
I'll share it.
Alright, public comment. Welcome to the planning board. Anyone that has any public comments, please raise their hand and verify yourself and love to hear from you. Everybody's happy, great.
You got it. Good, thank you.
Bro, great.
Yes, sir.
Okay, liaison comments and reports.
The Watershed Council.
Alright.
That's key.
Yes. The Watershed Council met a couple of weeks ago and the purpose of their meeting was that they're aware that the construction standards are being reviewed by the county commission and that the construction standards will be incorporated into the subdivision and erosion control organs. As you know, the amendments are, have been awaiting legal review. And the council decided that they would like to withdraw temporarily the current amendments, promptly the review, and then, this was a request, they decided to make the commission. And then to, once the construction standards were approved by the commission, that the council would like to integrate those into the amendments and then submit everything at one time for legal review. It seemed hard for us to review the amendments and to review the standards and then to try to integrate. So that's what they proposed and my understanding is...
The commissioners did agree with that. That seemed to make much sense.
Do we need as a board to approve?
No, I don't think so. Chairman of the Watershed, Christian came to us and asked us if we would... So that's the way they would like to attack the problem. That's the way.
Did the company's transportation get that delivered off?
We have...
Get over that whole press go down?
No, we got that.
Any other report?
Well, Larry, it's not like this where I wish I was a better politician than I am, but I'm just an old tired football coach who's freezing to death. But I just have never been a person that can sit here with 500 Capitol Hill in the room pretending to be me. So there's something I think needs to be addressed. Will I say anything? This is not open, this is not debate time. This is just, I just want to put forth what my viewpoint is on this as your liaison to the county commission. At the last meeting, of course, we had a public comment period, which is not public debate period, and there were some fairly heavyweight allegations made now to the members of the plan. Since that time, I've tried to research. I've got papers from both sides. I've talked to as many people as I feel, felt like I needed to have gotten a hold of, Al. It looks like, and it looks like somebody did, but I didn't and I apologize for that, Al. But here's what I want to say and it really is very simple. I'm not gonna take sides because I don't think I need to. I will say very plainly that people have a right to come before the county commissioners and say what they want to say. But at the same time, people who are asked a question just because they sit on a board like the planning board does not mean they cannot answer that question. And so I find though, if you've been looking at both parties and talking as to many as I could, and I again, I apologize, I have not talked. I don't see any evidence that anybody on the planning board sought anybody out. And my evidence that I have, if there's evidence out there, is not where I can sit. So my point is this. I just want both sides to understand that the commissioners view that there is but one position, taken on a plaque, and that is the vote taken by the planning board. That anybody else that speaks is speaking for themselves and that it should be taken, that vote. And that the only people that can speak for the planning board or a decision made by the planning board is the chairman of the planning board following the vote in the county plan. And so if you want to know what the county thinks or where the county stands, that's where it stands. And so I wish, I really wish, that the two sides could sit and talk and I'm not sure that would fix anything. I don't know. I don't, I'm not going to get inside your heads. I can just say that there were some pretty heavy allegations made. I think they were responded well by Susan and I appreciate that response. I'm not going to tell anybody in this county that they can't come before the county commissioners and say certain things. Okay? I don't have the right to do that. I also am not gonna, not gonna let anybody say that members of a board cannot respond to a question that they are asked. Okay? Unless somebody's done something with the first amendment that I don't know. So all I'm trying to say is, for all of you out there who would like to know where the county stands, it stands where our representative on planning issues says it stands and that he stands on what the planning board has done. Okay? Everything else is a conversation between two citizens as far as I'm concerned. And so probably if I've misconstrued what went on, that was our position a week ago Tuesday and I think it remains our position. That the planner, county planner, based on decisions made by this board is the county position. Anybody else's position is their position and they're fully entitled to that position. And they're fully free to speak that position when asked. But the planning board's decision is what is given to the county plan. And that's about as, I'm not much of a politician, you know that. But that's about as clear as I can put. I'm not gonna take sides in this issue because, quite frankly, there are two sides. I understand both sides. I'm not saying one side because if I take sides, I gotta say somebody's right and somebody's wrong. I'm saying that both people spoke their mind. I might not have said what was said, but it was said. And they had every right to say it as long as they can back it up. And I don't have any evidence that shows me that there was any intent by anybody on the planning board to create a problem. And so therefore, as far as I'm concerned, the position of the planning board is what you say it is. And it will always be that way for me. I'm not a voting member of this board, although some people in the county might think that I am. I'm not. I'm your liaison to the county commissioners. Okay? Whatever you vote on is what the position's gonna be from this board and from the county planner. And the only people that can change that are the people. So that's kind of where we're at. And I'm sure that that left both sides dissatisfied. And if I have, then I've done it right. For the cause, because that's where I'm at. But I feel like it's hanging over us like a big cloud. I don't want to have a big debate about it because I think y'all have worked it. But I needed to say that because the discussion was really one-sided with the county commissioners. And it needed, there needs to be no question that we understand that individuals on boards are going to talk to people that contact them and ask them questions. And there's nothing wrong. Okay? There's nothing wrong. Susan, I know that that's probably not what you wanted to hear.
No, that's, that's my idea for you, but I also want to...
Well, I can't stop you from doing that because you're a member of the planning board, but I really would like to, if I didn't mean to stir this up and create you...
This is gonna be like one...
Derek, if you're the one I'm talking to, I want my...
Okay. So here we go. This one I didn't want to have happen, Mr. Trump. It's not the place for it.
I simply want to say that my excuse is that remarks were attributed to me that I did not make.
No.
And I have written to the county commissioners. Bobby has copied, several copies here. I do believe that people have the right to express their opinion, but if someone expresses an opinion about me that is inaccurate, I as an individual have a right to respond to that. I will not use someone on this board. If anyone would like to see my response, I would be very happy to give you a copy.
Come on.
I'm a little...
I have a one comment. I also have a written response, which I'm finalizing right now. I'll be happy to talk to you anytime.
But the reason we had in contact is not your fault.
One, the one thing I'd like to clarify is the lot that was in question that Chris spoke to me about has never been before this time.
Okay.
It was part of the subdivision that never came to me.
Thank you. Yes, and again, let me make sure how you understand. It's not your fault we have problems.
Mr. Gutt, thank you for your comment on Tuesday. Okay, new business. Any other reports? New business? Yep. Alright, let me introduce Andrea Leslie.
She's, yeah, she's sitting.
Are you ready?
She should be.
I'm sorry, yeah, there are some technical difficulties.
Make chicken salad.
Yeah, I am actually ready.
Oh, you're fine.
Yeah, we can turn, Derek, do you think we can turn that square through?
Whatever you need to do here.
We can turn that. We can shine this on.
Does anybody know how to turn that off?
What you really need to start with?
No, this is different.
No, I'm saying that. This one. There you go. It's all. Let me move my stuff and get out of the way. I just want to, just want to still, that's what I'm saying. It doesn't work because it doesn't do anything.
Alright, well, thank you very much for allowing me to come to you and talk to you about this big watershed planning effort I've been involved with for the past three years. I apologize for that picture because it seems like it's cutting the top off my slides so I might have to tell you what's missing. Basically, what I'm gonna talk to you about is the Franklin of Montana watershed plan. Okay, so we had a goal of this planning effort and that goal was to develop a watershed plan to protect stream health while addressing local concerns, communities. So make this plan as useful as possible for a number of different folks, for local government, for nonprofit watershed groups like Little Tennessee Watershed Association, for the Solon Water Conservation District, for state government, for federal government, for a lot of different people. And this effort took about three years of a lot of intensive and creative energy from a number of different folks. So I'm speaking on behalf of all of them. I am a aquatic biologist. I work as a watershed planner for the North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources. And I work for a program called the Ecosystem Enhancement Program. We're a non-regulatory program. And what we do is we build stream and wetland restoration and protection projects across North Carolina to mitigate for damage done by development and DOT. What we've been doing lately is a lot of stream restoration. We have a stream restoration project in Cat and Rabbit, well, in Cat Creek. It's about a mile long. If you drive by and see it, it's slowly stabilizing and vegetation is finally starting to grow well on it. But we've also contributed to big protection projects. We were a big funder of cat or tract, which is now a game land. We try and put our stream restoration, wetland restoration and protection projects on the ground with an eye to watershed needs. Where are these projects gonna make the most difference for stream health? Where do people need them the most? And we do this through some of our watershed planning, which I'm talking to you about today. And all of these little spots, you know, the blue and green and gray spots are where we've had these local watersheds planning efforts. There are over 30 of them across the state and Franklin of Montana is one of them. So here's the watershed. It's about 150 square miles and it's basically all the land and streams that drains the Little Tennessee River downstream of the Colosseia, Colosseia River, through Lake Emery, all the way to Lake Montana. So that includes Crawford Branch and a large part of Franklin, Rabbit Cat Creek, Iola Creek, Cowee, Burnington, Sawmill. Most of it's Macon County, but there's a little bit of swing behind it. The reason we're, we focused in on this area is for a number of reasons, but the big reason is because there is just an amazingly rich set of natural resources in streams in this area. There are a number of rare threatened and endangered species in streams and rivers and on uplands in the watershed. And there's a lot of interest in trying to learn about them and try to protect them. And here's the jewel. This Little Tennessee River, of course, folks canoeing. And this is something that's obviously important, not just to fish and wildlife, but to people as well. So just take you a little, talk to you a little bit about this watershed. It's, it's really protected in large part because there's a lot of private and public forest lands up in the headwaters. So a lot of the small feeder streams are forested and cold and clear and feed the larger systems. Of course, there's this really wonderful thriving agricultural tradition within. Here's the Cowee Valley and all kinds of other bottom lands throughout the watershed. And the town of Franklin. So I mentioned that I'm speaking for a number of folks. We had a local advisory committee through this whole three-year process. And it was made up of about 25 members. And they were a lot of technical people. Folks from natural resource and planning agencies, staff from the Solon Water Conservation District, Cooperative Extension, Macon County Planning and Environmental Services. We involved researchers from Western Carolina and Kalia Hydrologic Lab, Little Tennessee Watershed Association, and Land Trust for Little Tennessee were involved. A lot of different folks. And these experts were able to help us develop our study objectives and our planning objectives for this three-year effort. They were key in collecting a lot of the data that we used. And then they helped us identify specific on-the-ground projects that could be implemented and a number of larger recommendations that I'll talk to you today about. So we spent a lot of time on the ground and on our computers and on GIS trying to understand the health of streams throughout this watershed. 150 square miles is a lot of ground to cover and a lot of streams to cover. So what we tried to establish was where are streams doing well? Where are they healthy? Where do the biological communities, where are they thriving? Where is water quality poor? What types of pollution are problematic? And do fish and other aquatic organisms, which are sort of our overall indicator, our best indicator of stream health, do they have good habitat? Do they have good water quality? This is a really broad overview of watershed health. We broke up the watershed into smaller drainage areas and looked at this watershed in that way as well as on a stream-specific basis. And all of these areas that are in green are, have good ecological function. They're very, they're pretty healthy. In general, the streams are of excellent quality. Biological communities like fish and aquatic insects are doing well. Those in yellow are of moderate function and those that are red are not functioning very well. So what we did was after looking at this big picture, we went in and honed in and studied the streams within these yellow and red areas a little further to try to understand what are some of the factors, the problems, the stressors. I call, I say stressors a lot today. Stressors are just problems that are, that are limiting stream health. This isn't to say that every stream within a green area is doing well. In fact, there are some streams such as Taylor Ford and Teleco Creek that have their own problems. But in general, if you look at the, at a grand scheme, those watershed areas are... Okay. So after doing all this work, we came up with eight key stressors that are really important in terms of limiting stream health. And unfortunately, you can't read the top one. But the top one says, lack of woody riparian vegetation. Or lack of stream-side buffer around a lot of our streams. Channel modification, which is channel straightening, stream channel ditching, moving. That really destabilizes the stream so that there's a lot of, oftentimes, there's a lot of stream bank erosion that, that includes... Excess sediment. Sedimentation is probably the number one pollutant in North Carolina streams. And in Franklin of Montana, it's no different. Really important in how it changes habitat and water quality. I'll talk about it a little bit more. Excess nutrient inputs primarily from fertilizers, possible leaky septic systems and livestock access to streams, when livestock are infenced out. Bacterial contamination, fecal bacterial contamination. Stormwater runoff, tomato pesticides, although those aren't an issue anymore because the big plot of tomatoes that we were concerned about is now planted in black areas. And then barriers to fish catch. And I'm gonna focus in and talk to you a little bit more about these stressors that are circled here. This one, which you can't read, lack of riparian vegetation, excess sediment inputs, bacterial contamination and stormwater runoff. Okay, this is the Iola Creek watershed. So this is on the west countryside, drains the Little Tennessee River right up here. And this is a map of the stream network. It's kind of embraced in its green lines here. And all the streams that are red basically have no woody vegetation on the side of the streams, on either side. And those that are yellow or orange have very minimal woody buffer. Well, of course, this is the airport here. You know, this has been farmed for a long time. These are rich bottom lands. And so this is, you know, this has been maintained like this for a long time. The problem with not having a woody buffer, even 15 feet of woody buffer, is there's a lot of stream habitat and water quality issues that come from that. And you can see here, this is actually Crawford Branch in town. Without a stream buffer, you can see it's eroding away. Here's a stream in the watershed that has a healthy buffer. The benefits of a buffer are it provides shade to the stream, so the straight, so that the temperature is able to host mountain life like trout. Because they like cooler water. A stream, well, woody buffer is really key in stabilizing stream banks, keeping the mud on the lake. It's also really great at filtering pollutants that come along the line. Sediment, nutrients, even pesticides. And then something that a lot of people don't know about or think about is it's the foundation for the entire aquatic food bank. This is where the energy comes from that insects eat, that fish end up eating, that birds who come to eat fish benefit from. It's the engine that powers the entire aquatic food bank. Okay, the second stressor I want to talk to you about is sedimentation. Y'all know a lot about sedimentation and a lot of the things that you deliberate on, environmental ordinance, has to do with sedimentation. It's mud, silt, fine sand, and its impacts for the biological community is it basically smothers habitats so that it really limits the kinds of life that can live in it. It muddies the water. And there are in fact, in fact, state water quality standards that can be violated if you get a muddy enough stream and that can end up pushing that stream on an impaired streams list of the state. And of course, it's been responsible for filling Lake Emery and other impoundments. The key sources in the watershed, again, eroding stream banks, which we talked about, disturbed land, landslides, and eroding roads and driveways and road ditches. We, we were looking at the extent of fine sedimentation, damage in streams all over the watershed. And we found a lot of this fine sediment, even in very forested catchments and forest service land, all coming from eroding roads, eroding gravel and dirt roads. The third key stressor I want to talk to you about is stormwater runoff. This is Crawford Branch again. I'm using it as a little example, a little paste. This is a topographic map of the town of Franklin. And this is Crawford Branch here. Comes in and ends up in Lake Emery right here. We, there's been a lot of fish sampling that's been done on Crawford Branch through time that's shown that the fish community is really unhealthy. But we went in and tried to supplement that with some water quality sampling and some aquatic insect sampling. Aquatic insects are really great at gauging long-term water quality. And we sampled upstream of downtown here and downstream of downtown. Well, upstream of downtown, the community was rated good. Downstream of downtown, it was rated poor or impaired. And this stream is gonna end up on the state's impaired streams list next year because of that. Why? Basically, because all the rain that's landing on all these impervious surfaces like roads and roofs is going directly from those roads and roots and from, you know, gravel areas like this into storm drains and into the stream. There's no treatment involved at all. So all the pollutants that are carried with that water end up in the stream. But also during storm events, all of that water slammed into the stream can really destabilize the stream, you know, bang out the stream banks, deepen it and scour away stream habitat for aquatic organisms. And it just really makes that stream an inhabitable place. And the last key stressor I wanted to talk to you about was fecal coliform bacteria. So fecal coliform bacteria is basically an indicator of human or animal waste. And we went around and did a number of samples, took a number of samples throughout the watershed but honed in on some areas where there were some high levels. And there are eight streams here that have high levels. And we found that they, through repeated sampling, exceed the state's standard for fecal coliform bacteria. The major sources in this watershed are unfenced livestock, unmaintained septic systems and some possible sewer system problems in the town of Franklin. The town's been really working hard and trying to fix a lot of these issues so we're hoping that that's not gonna stick around. Why is that important? Well, you know why that's important. You can't keep kids out of the creek. Give me Crawford Branch. You can't keep kids out of the creek, even Crawford Branch. Okay, so I want to talk to you about the watershed plan and some of the recommendations that we made to address these stressors and to protect some of the watershed assets. The, the areas are doing well in the watershed, and there are a whole lot of them. Okay, in the handout that you have, that five-page here, that five-page is a summary of this plan. The planning effort, you know, covered three years, the plan itself. I don't know how many pages it has anymore, but it's long. Seventy-five, eighty pages. I've digested all of that down into five pages for you. In that handout is also a link to all of the documents. You can access all of our documents, the plan, our assessment reports, everything, online. But in that five-page summary, I've included this table on page five. It's a table of 36 recommendations that we make to restore and protect stream quality in the watershed. And it's divided into four basic types of recommendations. One is conservation projects. Those are on-the-ground projects that we can do, such as fence out livestock, put in a stream restoration project, help a farm family put an easement on their farm, protect it and farmland. The second group is policy and institutional measures, which you guys have the power and the challenge of trying to work with for a number of different reasons. The third is educational activities. We developed a really good set of ideas for an educational plan. And then the last, our continued research and assessment activities to help us answer the questions we weren't able to answer. I would just summarize these three of, three of the four different types of recommendations. This is conservation projects. All the conservation projects that we recommend are in an atlas of projects, and they're all voluntary. So only landowners, farmers who want to work with us would work with us. All right, so the types of projects that we identified are stream and streamside buffer restoration, agricultural best management practices, such as fencing livestock out, putting watering tanks in it, stormwater best management practices for the town of Franklin, farmland protection, and forest and floodplain protection. This is a map of the stormwater best management practices for Franklin. We identified about 40 of them and all identified with these little squares here. And here's an example. This is the Franklin High School. What we did was we took a look on the ground at Franklin High School and saw where a lot of the impervious cover was and where it was draining to. And proposed a number of best management practices, such as rain gardens, detention ponds, to try to hold that water, detain that water, and treat it. And here's an example. This is a swale that drains a lot of, one of the building's rooftops and parking lots. And right now, it just goes through this gravel stuff and right, ends up right into, in Crawford Branch you mentioned. But this is a schematic that shows two best management practices, where you have a vegetated swale and then sort of a rain garden that would detain the water and actually treat it before it's, before it's discharged to Crawford Branch. Okay, so on to the environmental education activities. As I mentioned, we have a number of ideas for an environmental education program. Here are a few of them. A streamside buffer awareness program, enabling kids, a kids-in-the-creek program or a program where maybe sixth graders, all sixth graders in Franklin County can go through a stream day and learn about fish and water quality. A landowner action guide, an environmental steward recognition program, and stormwater awareness program. This is actually, a lot, a number of these things are being undertaken by Little Tennessee Watershed Association now. Another set of educational activities are, have to do with sedimentation and erosion control. There's a group of folks across the seven western counties of North Carolina who are trying to streamline and develop a better set of contractor trainings to produce river-friendly contractors. And this could be something that makes life a lot easier for contractors who have to go work in a number of different counties and have to deal with different types of training programs and different regulations. Okay, so on to the hard stuff, the stuff that you have to deliberate upon. So we know that, we're really lucky to have this river and the streams that are so biologically productive, that are so beautiful. And you also need to accept and embrace, embrace development and what it can bring to you economically. Well, how can you do that while still protecting the resources that you have on the ground? That's your challenge, right? You're dealing with it all the time. So here are some institutional measures that we recommend in the plan that have to do directly with you, your decision-making abilities. The first, which was mentioned already today, is to modify the county sedimentation, sediment and erosion control ordinance to better define and protect streamside buffers. That language has already been developed by the Watershed Council and we urge that that would be a good part of protecting buffers as they are that are on the ground. The second is to implement a steep slope ordinance. And the third is to develop a stormwater ordinance. And I'll talk about those things a little bit more. The other two things have to do with education. I already mentioned that there are some groups that are working on those efforts, environmental education programs, trying to strengthen the sediment and erosion control training programs, participating in that, encourage that, because that's only going to enable you to have more educated contractors who can do good work on the ground. Just emphasizing again that streamside buffers benefit both water quality and fish and wildlife habitat. But, okay, so here we are. This is a development in Asheville that was very controversial when it was put in. It's called Reynolds Mountain. And so the challenge is, you know, how to, how to control impacts from, from development, right? With a steep slope ordinance, your challenge is to try to deal with sediment. I mean, that, and a number of other, other issues. But sediment is a main environmental impact that can come from steep slope development. It doesn't have to, if it's done right, right? So I think of both the steep slope ordinance and the stormwater ordinance as preventative medicine. It's a lot easier to prevent a problem now than to fix it later. In some, in some cases, you can't fix it later. So your sub-development strategies subcommittee develops a minimum provisions, and they're good. Cut and fill specifications on steep slopes, set backs from streams, special attention to sites in designated areas of the stability index map and downslope hazard map. And then road building and maintenance standards. They're laid out already for us by this great guide that was developed by the Natural Resources Conservation Service and other folks, called the Lehman's Guide to How to Access Road Construction in the Southern Appalachians. So it's built for us, built for the Southern Appalachians. Another bit of preventative medicine is a stormwater ordinance. Again, stormwater, as you saw in Franklin, that's a key issue behind Crawford Branch being as degraded as it is. So if you can help prevent impacts from future development on stormwater, from future development, you're going to be protecting or preventing impacts for the future. So here are some, some things you can think about for that. Always keeping in my slope, because you're not dealing in the coastal plain, gillen mountains. So minimum lot sizes should change depending on the slope. Minimize site disturbance and try to protect as much vegetative cover as possible. Minimize the impervious cover on site. And where there's impervious cover, try to keep that stormwater on-site. Try to treat it on-site, try to detain it on-site so that that stormwater doesn't gush down into a stream, gully it out, and cause problems where they're on downstream. Where stormwater is let off into a stream, make sure that that runoff mimics pre-development rains. And try to see if you can control both sediment and temperature in this mountain basin when treating the water itself. A number of the things that I've talked about take a lot of hard work, take a lot of money. And, and I just want to tell you that in, in areas where this kind of planning has been done, it's served as a really great foundation for involving other entities, grant funds, other organizations that see that there's a plan on the ground, see that there are recommendations, and they're willing to come in and fund things. This is a stormwater wetland that was being constructed in the town of Lenore in Cobalt County. We received a $300,000 Lenore Management Trust Fund grant to construct this to treat some stormwater runoff in the town. They're also having flooding problems. And that was because it was a recommendation in our local watershed. So I, I'm trying to, I try to portray to you that there are a number of different ways, a number of different angles that we can take, not only you as decision-makers, but resource professionals like Soil and Water Conservation District, the Land Trust, Little Tennessee Watershed Association, Divisional Water Quality, volunteer groups, that, that, steps that they can, we all can take to try to restore and protect resources in the watershed. And with that, I can take any questions.
Andrew, is there an ongoing program now that you can actually see decade after decade of the water quality degradings in our watershed? Or, I mean, how do we measure?
Against other watersheds?
Well, no, in our own watershed. I know that Dr. McFarlane has done a lot of work in this area, and we're blessed to have him. But, you know, as development takes place, is there, can, can we see the changes? I mean, is that something you guys do?
Yeah, there, I mean, we, this was a three-year project, right? Dr. McFarlane, of course, has that great fish database that's kind of logged things, certain streams every time. There are also biologists that are working in Little Tennessee River itself and studying fish, certain fish species, studying mussel species, and, and looking at their status over time. So there are those sorts of measurements. There's also a water quality station on Little Tennessee River at, I think it's at Neatmore, or I, I just had it at Iola, the Iola Bridge. So there are kind of some bits and pieces, ways that people are logging what's happening in the watershed.
Anybody else have any questions?
You may have explained this earlier on, Andrew, but why did y'all just start at Franklin and not include some of the watersheds south of here?
Yeah, the Cartuviche, people were really interested in that Cartuviche, especially since it's a drinking water source. And to be honest, it was just because we had to choose an area that was small enough to be able to assess well. And I think 150 square miles was probably too big. So, yeah, I wish we could have done it for a greater amount of the place.
You referred to this, but could you tell us a little bit more about what kind of follow-up you will have to be able to help facilitate some of your recommendations?
So that local advisory team that I mentioned, about 25 people, a number of those folks are going to be involved in an implementation. And we're going to meet soon to try to sit down and talk about a number of these recommendations and see, prioritize them, and see who we, who else we need to involve to work on them. And so there's going to be a committed implementation effort. This isn't just going to sit on the shelf.
Was there, was there a funding section tied to your plan? Like grants you might pursue or places you could get money to implement?
Yes, there is, yes.
That's tied to the, the recommendations?
Yes. It's in a, I think it's in the last chapter of the plan.
Okay.
I have copies of your great big report. If other people want copies of your great big report, I'll leave it.
Well, in this, this handout, the easiest and paper, most paper-saving way is to click on this, on this link on page three, and you can access all the documents electronically. If you want a personal copy, planning board, I can make that copy and then I can mail it to you.
Do you want a copy?
Absolutely.
I've got one here. So maybe if you, if any of you want a copy, tell Derek and he'll tell me. Or you can just tell me tonight.
Any other questions, comments? Andrew, we appreciate the work you're doing. We appreciate you sharing what you've done and all the others involved.
You're welcome.
And I'm looking forward to hearing that work. Okay, next order of business, review of final plat for Clubhouse cabin phase of Wild Life.
I want to pass out, I've got about four copies of the map left. Three were picked up at the office prior to the meeting to give people a little extra opportunity to, to look at these maps before we met. That was at the direction of the chairman. What do I need to, what do I need to? I've distributed a, it says Wildflower Clubhouse Phase Final Plat Review. And as usual, it's just a summary of what the planning department, administrative staff has looked at in-house and the things that we feel the plat, the requirements we feel the plat has met and some requirements that at this time we feel the plat has not met. And we'd recommend that the plat needs to meet before we feel comfortable giving it a final approval. As a little side note, September the 8th was the preliminary plat review, where the preliminary plat for this subdivision came before the planning board. We approved it at that time under two conditions. Number one, the road serving lots C1, C2, and C3 had to be named in the preliminary review fee of $120 that would go toward the 12 lots on this phase to be paid to the planning department. As of today and a while back, these two preliminary requirements have been met. And the developer has continued working on the subdivision out there with, in conjunction with the administrative staff of the planning department, the fire inspector, Mr. Jimmy Tean, who's here with us tonight, and the Sedimentation and Erosion Control Officer, Mr. Matt Mason. So we've been on the ground out there looking and making sure that when we approve the preliminary plat, that they were taking the steps necessary so that we would have a, so that we could bring the final plat in here with as least heartburn as possible and get it approved by the planning board. There were two site visits that had been made from the time that we approved this preliminary plat on September the 8th and until tonight, on September the 30th, we made an onsite visit, the fire inspector, Mr. Matt Mason, and myself. And we asked the developers to make the following changes. At this time, we noticed that a road needed to be At this time, we noticed that a road needed to be widened. If you will look on your map, lots C5 and C7, that section of the road, it was felt by Mr. Team, needed to be widened to 20 feet to accommodate fire apparatus ingress and egress. The developer widened it at that time. We asked the developer to pay a portion of the road between lots C8 and C10 as the grade of this road exceeded 20%. The developer has had that done at this time. We asked him to construct an emergency vehicle turnaround at lot C1, again, at the request of the fire inspector, Mr. Jimmy Team. The developer has done that at this time. And I was informed today, as of this morning, Mr. Team went out there again today and made sure that the gates were programmed to accommodate emergency vehicles that were going to get into the subdivision. And after speaking with Mr. Team, he notified me that you can go out there now and you can put your, if you're in a fire truck or police car or whatever, you can put it on Yelp or something, and you can Yelp it one time and the gates will open.
About five seconds.
In about five seconds. So that's what we were looking for and we asked the developer to do it. It wasn't highlighted on the sheet because I didn't know it at the time, but I happen to know now that this has been taken care of. The plat requirements as set forth in 159.56 of the Maybach County Subdivision Ordinance have been met. Again, that's the drawing that's sitting in front of you tonight. Number 4196 dated October 19th, 2011, drawn by Ben West of Smoking Out Survey. And at this time, as we're all viewing the plats, and these plats, in some cases, were picked up earlier at the planning department. If you feel that there's anything that, if any board members feel that there's anything that the planning department and administrative staff has overlooked or needs to take a closer look at, then we'll take that comment at this time before we go to the final three recommendations of the administration.
I have a road grade question. I've been worrying about road grades before and preliminary preview, and I appreciate that you all going up there and getting us more information on that. I understand the one section of the road that the grade requested to be paved because the grade did exceed the allowable level. But would you say at this point that all gravel or presto roads are at 10% or below? For no more than ridges without the exceptions of no more than 200 feet?
All gravel.
Yeah. And that paving is at 16% except for ridges of two or fewer than 200 feet?
Also, that gravel road between C8 and C9, or C8 and C10, where it was paved, there's a chance that that one could be over 10% up there, but we had it paved to the point where it became a dropway. When it goes over, when the grade's over that point, it's a gravel. And it's over 10%, but it's a dropway. No more than considered a road. So we had it paved up until that point that it became a dropway.
I don't have near as many questions as I did last time. And you've addressed a lot of the things in here that I had questions about before. Just one general question was that there was a lot more information on the preliminary plat than there is on the final plat, it seems like. One of the things that was shown on the preliminary plat was hipels on the road, its cross-sections, and the access drives. And that is, it's required that the roadway and shoulder dimensions be shown. And I know there's a comment up here that says they meet the standards, but I kind of like those hipels on the road. The other thing Susan asked one question that I had also, but this says water lines location and size if a, if community system is proposed. And I'm not sure that that's one question that I wanted to address in our subdivision ordinance review. But my understanding all the time was that as community system is, as it's used here, that what it means is more than one resident's own will. And I don't know why, there is a, a community public water supply system that's defined in state regs, but I don't think there's anywhere where a community system in state regs is mentioned. And I wasn't involved in all of the subdivision ordinance drafting, so I don't know what that means. But one thing I do think is it's important to show the water lines. And I think it's important that the size of those water lines be addressed. Because I know one of the things that I saw in my work with public water supply and other work that I've done is undersized water lines that lead to pressure problems, respect.
Just the stance, and I'll tell you where I, that the planning department has stood on that. And I talked with you earlier about it today. There is no, it does reference in 159.56 of the subdivision ordinance that if a community water system is proposed, the water line should be shown. Well, the problem there is that community water system is not defined in our ordinance. Deener does define a community water system as a water system that provides drinking water to at least 15 connections or to at least 25 people who live there year-round. It goes on to say examples of community water systems include cities, towns, subdivisions, and local home parks. So in the absence of having a definition, the, I mean, it's almost by de facto goes to, where's the next definition we can find? And in this case, it happens to be provided to us by Deener.
To what detriment, to what detriment to the public good does the size of water lines mean anything?
Why does the size mean?
To what detriment to the public good does water line size mean anything?
Well, it's not to the public good to not be able to have over 10 PSI at your shower or your sink.
Is that going to hurt the people in Burnetown because there's one lot that'll have that?
It hurts the people in Burnetown and hurts the people in that subdivision or the second part of that lot.
Is it our duty to make sure that they get the plaque of warning?
I think it is our duty. I mean, that's the difference in philosophy, Jimmy, but I think that's what we're about, is trying to make things better for people to come here that are not able to do the due diligence.
Let me ask you a question. The building code, does it have a definition of what size plumbing comes into a building? And it's usually three-quarter?
Yeah, it's a quarter. There is pressure and flow requirement.
There is a pressure and a flow requirement. So if it doesn't need that, and the developer's putting the wrong side piping using the code?
You can't or you can't?
You can't. So that pretty much answers the question. If the piping is not large enough in diameter, or the pressure from the pump's not, development is not going to make a standard to put a house on.
That's pre-entirement. That's nothing about any capital system.
Development systems are well-regulated, I'd say.
I'd like to comment. When we did this subdivision ordinance, we did not intend for all of this stuff to go on the final plat. It was supposed to go on an as-built plat, be kept by the planning department so copies could be given to homeowners association. But it was never intended to go on the final plat. It don't need to be there. The final plat don't need to show anything except what's necessarily needed lots. All this other stuff needed to be put on an as-built plat to be kept by the planning department. Now, how it got to be shown on the final plat in the ordinance, I don't know. I admit it's in there, but it shouldn't. And I think most of you remember that. We talked about that at length, that we couldn't get all this stuff on the final plat. It wasn't so good. It's supposed to be shown on the preliminary and as-built.
So Derek, are you asking us to make a motion to report the plat? We've got some things, I mean, I think we still got three things that that we need to go over. And that was what we recommended from the planning department. These issues that brought up, I mean, are we putting, are the issues that have been brought up from the floor here, are we going to put, are we putting those to bed? I mean, does anybody have any heartburn over anything on this plat?
Derek?
Just to simplify, it seems like we might be debating on maybe some things as you talk about the subdivision ordinance. But relative to approval of this plat, just what Al was talking about, regarding the water lines, does what's on that plat meet what's said in the subdivision ordinance?
I think it does, yes. I think it, because that subdivision on which reads... It says, thank you. Says the preliminary file on an as-built plat shall depict or contain the information indicated below. And that's where it goes on to talk about the water lines. It, while it doesn't necessarily depicts them, depict them, in my opinion, it contains information about them up in the top right-hand corner on your notes that says they're intended to be put in the, thank you, Al, that they're intended to be put in the middle of the road. And while it's not depicted on there, there is information regarding that contained on the plat. So I would say yes.
And my thought would be, I think that some points that Susan and Al brought up are by one that obviously need to be addressed in the subdivision ordinance. But my understanding that this plat is before us tonight is to be approved based on the current ordinance that's in place. Yes, and if that's the case, we need to take care of that piece of business. And I think that the issues that's brought forward certainly need to be addressed. But, you know, when we do work and we get to that.
Yeah, you've got to dance with the one you brought.
I could show them that.
Your question's right.
My question was answered and...
Well, with that being said, just a few things that were picked up by the planning department. Number one, a final plat review fee of $120 must be paid from the Maybach County Planning Department.
Has that been done?
Not yet. They paid for their preliminary, but we've got to pay for the final, too. It says, it's supposed to say, did Matt type this? No, I'm just kidding. I doubt it is, it was my mistake. It's supposed to say the developer must provide evidence that the Clubhouse Phase will be covered under the existing homeowners association. And that has been taken care of. I spoke with the attorney that is handling it today. They are going to roll this development in, and it will be signed on the plat that it's covered under A29, A29-271. That's the D book where the current homeowners association is recorded. So it will be covered, and the road maintenance is spelled out in that agreement. So that's where subdivision ordinance is intended to get at, and it does do that in this case, and it will. And again, the gate being programmed to accommodate emergency vehicle access, and speaking with Mr. Team today, that has been done as well. So that issue was cleared. I think just when they sign this plat right here that says owner developer, when it references the Declaration of Restricted Covenants that are recorded in D book A29 at page 271, with that signature, $120 review fee, then it would be, my opinion, that this plat is ready to go. It's fine. And also, let's not forget, like Lamar said earlier, we do need an as-built plat to be provided to the planning department so that homeowners, when they come in and have any questions, we can distribute that plat to them at that time. And this is not a prerequisite for final plat approval. Submitting an as-built is not, but it is spelled out in the ordinance, and I'm sure that we can get the developer to work with us and submit one when it comes to that stage.
Well, with that said, how much motion did we throw?
I said. Can approve it based on?
Based on the two things that we did.
Approve the dis却?
All of them in favor? Can you catch it? All right, unfinished business. Continue review of subdivision ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I understand that quick.
Yes.
Derek, I thank you for your good work and your thorough and everything that law requires you to do, and I appreciate it.
You get a raise?
It's going to be hard to live with you and you keep saying good.
Yeah. Kind of like the perspiration under my breath.
Right, Dr. Major, I was going to state something about the subdivision. There's a lot of problems, major problems, and it makes it very difficult to deal with. And I think that the commissioners ought to consider suspending so we can fix it. Because I've had problems with everything I go to do, and it costs people money. We had to survey 35 acres of the day so we could do two lots because of flaws in the ordinance. And they need to be, things like that often need to be done. If it stands around half, you had 100 acres, and you wanted two lots out there, you'd have to survey the whole mountain acres and show it on the map. It's ridiculous to put that forward. And if we do that, if we take the time here, if we fix and move on. Now, that's a comment, my motion is like that. That's a comment to the commissioners and to the rest of the board because it's causing hardship on the within account.
I missed the last meeting, so where are we in terms of?
We haven't been either.
We haven't been either. I'm better. Separate eight.
Where about that game? All right, Derek. Yeah, I've, I distributed to each of you a packet last time, Larry, where we stopped at, where we were going to begin having the discussion on vested rights. And in looking at vested rights and the many facets that go along with vested rights, my first recommendation in distributing this information is that we need somebody here to talk to us that has had experience in dealing with vested rights, and we need a land use attorney here present when we talk about vested rights. I think if we get too far into discussion without having both of us present, then it's just an exercise in futility. Yes, sir. When that zoning ordinance changes and prohibits something that used to be allowed, then they can go back and prove their vested right because that vested right provision is contained in that ordinance.
When we was making this ordinance, you know, and there was no subdivision ordinance, I thought vested rights was pretty important. Those people might have subdivisions going and started and spent a substantial amount of money in it, and they may have been unduly burdened by this ordinance. This ordinance has been in place for over six years?
No, three years.
Three years. Three years, been in place over three years. And it's gonna stay in place, I think, okay? And if it's, if it's already been in place for three years, there should be no vested rights issues left. So I don't think vested rights, in my opinion, is something we need to bother with.
We didn't handle that very well, both of them.
I agree.
Did it, it's a problem. Terry Dalton's subdivision being a perfect example.
But putting vested rights into the subdivision ordinance now is not gonna solve Terry Dalton's problem.
Well, we need to change a whole lot of things about how we let people do something. If we, this ordinance exists right now, it's just made...
I agree with that. But I don't think vested rights is an issue we need to be discussing, but the ordinance has already been in place for three years.
I think with the Terry Dalton situation, Ken, you're an attorney, I hate to, I hate to, but I mean, it's just such a good opportunity. But if somebody wants to establish a common law vested right, they can go to court and try to prove that, Ken, and on...
They sure can, and, and, you know, I've, I believe that in the subdivision ordinance, I think it's important, it's important to get it right though. And that vested, those vested rights exist by the case law, it exists by the common law whether you address it in your ordinance or not. And maybe you take the edge off of it when you've got a little bit of time behind your ordinance, but every time you tweak that ordinance, or change that ordinance in a way that affects new people, it's a, it's a brand-new ordinance at that point in time for people that might have already spent some money on their development. So I, I'm with you, Derek. I, I think that there does need to be a legal representative listening and giving input during that process. It, it is, it is gonna come up some more, not as much as maybe the first three years, but it's gonna come up some more. And you never know what's sitting idle right now that hasn't come up yet from the first passing, because, you know, that passing in this economy, there might be work to be done on developments that have been frozen by the economy. So I, I would wholeheartedly suggest, because vested rights are so important, that you have somebody involved in that part of it that could help you with the other parts of the ordinance also.
With that being said, and with hearing that from an attorney, and I spoke with a couple of attorneys today that said the same thing, vested rights strictly a legal issue, it's you need legal representation when you're talking about it.
You know, I don't wanna reopen all these issues, I guess, but when I read the subdivision ordinance, you know, I know it's been three years since we worked on it, but there's some things in there that I, you know, found ways worded didn't seem to need to be the way I remembered that's what we passed on three years ago. I have, you know, you know, I realize that we didn't have all the legal counsel we just worked on, you know, and maybe some of the things we wanted to do may not have been legal. I mean, I don't know, and that's been cleaned up or massaged, I don't know, but I, there were a couple of things I thought didn't, didn't look the way I thought it did, didn't look the same way I remembered it, say that way. You know, I think there's, we need some assistance.
But in saying that, I'll try, before the next meeting, if the direction you guys want me to go is, I've got Gerald Green, he's the planner, planning director in Jackson County. Jackson County has had a vested right ordinance, and he had, he wants to speak to that. He said he would be glad to come over here and talk to the board a little bit about that and what they've seen going on with Jackson County in regards to that. And if we could get a land use turn, attorney here as well to get in on that conversation, I think it would be a benefit to everyone sitting around this table. And prior to that, I've provided you with some information on vested rights. And that includes the notes from the North Carolina Land Use Law Book that was written in two thousand and six by David Owens. It also includes general statute one fifty-three A dash three forty-four point one, which is the county statutory vested rights or approved site-specific development or phased development plans. Also, I've provided the Henderson County vested rights provision as it's extracted from the Henderson County Land Development Code, the applications for both the common law and statutory vested right as used by Henderson County. I've also got an email in that packet, which is very interesting. It's from Sarah Graham of the Southwestern Commission, and it's a little bit about what she has to say about vested rights as they occurred in Jackson County. And it's her, just kinda her describing what went on when Jackson County implemented the vested right ordinance in the time period between the moratorium they put on, the subdivision ordinance, and then the adoption of the subdivision ordinance and the steep slope ordinance together. And that, that, that is what is included in that packet. If you want me to go over that packet, then I'd be more than happy to, but it's just, it basically describes what a common law vested right is and the tests that you have to meet. There's four tests that somebody has to provide the burden of proof for. It gives case law to under each of them, a brief summary of the case law that illustrates what satisfied, what is satisfied, these requirements in the past. Then it goes on to the statutory vested rights, talks a little bit about what you have to have in place to be recognized as having a statutory vested right. And lastly, it talks about a development agreement, which is basically another vested provision.
I have a question on the letter that the lady sent. Ms. Graham, she refers to an MHDO, I don't know if I've ever...
The MHDO is the Mountain Hillside Development Ordinance that Jackson County adopted. I'm pretty sure that that's what that's called. And I saw that, Jimmy, and the funny thing, I was reading that letter today, and I said, I hope somebody don't ask me what that is. She didn't say it in here, and I should, and I don't know, but right when you said that, for some reason, it just clicked. So, Mountain Hillside Development Ordinance is, is what that means. But, and I was thinking, and given this, and knowing we gotta, we need to have some legal expertise, the least we can do is get familiar with this, take it home and have some good questions to ask, because by using this information, we can learn about common law vested rights, statutory vested rights, and that would help make better use of our time when we do have an attorney, somebody that's been involved with vested rights coming here to talk to us.
I think that would be the best thing to do, is study what you've given us and get back to the, when you got the question.
Do we wanna wait a month for that?
So you got to... We don't get dinner anymore.
December's when the vested rights issue came up last year. Always brings charge.
On something that is a legal issue, should it not, shouldn't we have a presentation from a legal entity? I mean, we, we can cut through a lot of it by just saying, this is what you really need to have. We can decide. We don't need to become experts on all this information. It's really gonna come down to a legal entity saying you can or you can't do it. My personal view, being on the planning board, a lot of times we spend ashing over things, and it turns out we just went down the wrong path, you know, we don't have a legal background, and there's no one available for legal assistance.
I would say that, you know, I don't know, I think a land use attorney or whatever you call them, try to talk to them, but I just got to know. But I would say that person needs to be in the room, and I would say Chester Jones. Let's cut, let's, let's get him in here, because I wanna talk, just, I don't have to leave you just a second, Chairman, I want just one other procedural issue, because I'm really troubled by, by what I'm hearing here. I don't have the, I don't have the years with this ordinance that Lamar and you guys have. Here's what concerns me, you're not the first person that's said that. And so, what I wanna do on a procedural thing, and I'll deal with Chester on this one, if we're gonna make changes in the legal office at the county, that needs to come back to you. You, you need to get a look at that. That's, that's wrong. You need to get a look at that. There's not much you're gonna be able to do about it. If a lawyer says we can't do it, then we're not gonna do it. But it should not catch you by surprise for the next time you review. You should know what changes these make. I will take that one on as a procedural issue, but I would have Chester Jones in the room the next time you meet to talk about this and with whatever land use, he's gonna tell you, when you talk to him, I'm not, I don't specialize in that. Chester, I don't want you in the room for that. I want you, because you had to work through Jack, but I want you in the room because you're the one that's gonna have to say the final omnibus, and let's don't go down a path that's gonna get changed, and then we find out about it eighteen months later.
It's long, or, you know, we may have forgotten something, and somebody asked us, and we look at a different thing.
I'm not gonna comment on what did or did not happen in the legal review, because I don't know. I wasn't there. But I, it just seems to me that if it's gonna go through something before we vote on it, and it gets changed, you guys ought to at least be appraised at the changes, even though there may or may not be anything you can do about those changes if they truly are legally based. And that's my fault, Jimmy, I don't...
I mean, we, we worked hard on that sole segmentation ordinance, and I voted, I don't think I voted for that. We worked hard on the sole segmentation ordinance, and I was a great big part of it. And now, there's people outside this planning board trying to change it.
Well, there's nothing you can do if the, and I'm not saying we're going to.
But I'm saying that it is happening. If that does happen, it needs to come back to this board.
You will get a legal review, and, and all I'm saying is, you may not have the authority to, you may not be able to get the commissioners to override that legal review, okay? But you have, at least, should be informed so that it's not a surprise to you when we change something specifically for a legal reason.
I still have not seen the additions that's being made to that thing for public review.
That's because they haven't, hasn't done, hasn't undergone a legal review. That's why you have to...
For public review.
Well, that's...
For me. Jimmy, give it.
Until it clears the lawyers, we're not gonna have a public hearing on it.
I'm not talking about a public hearing, I'm talking about just so I can just keep up with the things that they're trying to do. That's all I want.
What I'm telling you is, we haven't looked at it since it came to us from the Watershed Council, Jimmy. We haven't looked at it. The lawyer hasn't looked at it. And so that's the, that's what we talked about at the very beginning of the meeting. What they've done is pull that from consideration and want the whole package back, and I agree with them, that's what the commissioner said, get the whole package back in front of the board.
And that was signed to the Watershed Council by the county commission with the feeling that the Watershed Council would be the proper group to review that. It's not like they just said, well, hold on, we're gonna take that.
No, and it's not, it's not like you're never gonna get to look at it, but you're not gonna get to look at it until it's, you know, semi-finished, probably, is what I'm saying.
I'm still feeling that the planning board's being sidestep.
I don't think so. I really don't, I'm sorry, but I don't, I'm liaising on the both of them, and I don't think you're, I don't think you're being sidestepped, but that's just, we can bring it just... Mr. Chairman, I almost said that, I apologize for trying.
So you'll, you'll work on...
Yes, I'll, I'll make sure that we get the feedback if the lawyers are gonna change it. Now, if the commissioners change things, you'll find out about that when they change it, but, but when the, but if the lawyers are gonna change it, yeah.
So we need a legal representation on our next meeting?
Yeah, I would say, just liaison with Jack, tell Jack that we're gonna have to ask if you need a lawyer. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but we asked for that last time.
Well, I, I wouldn't hear. We've been talking about this for a long time.
We asked for that, and that didn't happen, and that may be my fault.
Last, no, it was last time I did the subdivision.
Oh, last time. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I told you, I was supposed to have a lawyer here this week, and that may have been my fault.
We asked for that.
And you should have gotten it, I wasn't... You know, and like I say, I don't have that history to, to kind of want the commissioners to do that.
Well, I, I was last meeting all that.
Well, let me, let me say that I won't comment on that particular thing, but I'll, I'll tell you that I see no reason why you shouldn't get the feedback on the legal.
You know, we may not have to have input in everything, but we need to be sure that the, our intention is not...
That's exactly...
...eroded. If it is, we need to recruit.
If we afforded what you intended to do, you may wanna take it out altogether or do something else. You should have the opportunity to do that.
But you're talking to the person that says that, you know, you're better off, you can negotiate something.
Without a doubt. I always say, I'm not gonna draw fingers, I'm not gonna say who did what wrong, I'll say I wasn't here, but I'm gonna say I'll fix that. There aren't many things I can fix, but that one I can fix, so you'll get, you'll get...
But Derek, you're recommending we take this and review it, and then when we have the next meeting, more of it.
Yeah, we'll have somebody legal here, or somebody from Jackson County here that can maybe better explain what went on up there, but I think that is worth taking a look at, that stuff, because, I mean, having a lawyer come in here and talk about statutory vested right, common law vested right, and you don't know the difference between statutory vested right and common law vested right, I mean, you're not gonna be able to ask that good of questions, you know, and really get tape from it.
Could you do a little research and find out if there was a legal reason why it was taken out of the ordinance in the first place? Because I'm sure we had it in there, but if there was a legal reason why it was taken out, I don't think there is, but I'd like to have. Why the vested rights was taken out of the original subdivision ordinance in the first place? I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to place blame, I don't care who it was or how it was, was there a legal reason why it was taken?
Do you think that the person that answered that question is a lawyer?
Yeah, I know, but our lawyers should be able to tell us if there are legal reasons why we should not have vested rights in our ordinance.
If you read that grandfathering clause that was in the original ordinance, and you read and you look at the effective date and the, or the adopted date of our, of our ordinance as it is now, and the date it became effective, it's basically saying the same thing. That grandfathering provision, as it is originally written in the old ordinance that was removed, is basically saying what that adopted date and effective date did.
Well, the adopted date and effective date, like that is...
Yeah, and if you read it, that, it says, "Any subdivision or phase of a phased subdivision that is under development at the date of the adoption of this ordinance shall be exempt from the provision of this ordinance, provided that the subdivision submits a preliminary flat for the subdivision to the subdivision administrator within three months prior to the effective date of the ordinance." Along with documentation showing that the developer had secured a valid erosion control permit at the time of this ordinance was adopted. Now, that was even removed. You didn't even have to do that part, the valid erosion control permit, all you had to do was bring the flat in. Subdivider shall provide documentation showing that he was in ownership of the entire area, and all phases of the subdivision for the exemption need to be contiguous. So basically, in that ninety-day adoption to effective date, we did that. We did just exactly what we were saying. In the original grandfathering clause.
But future vested rights, like the gentleman that was back here talking about, I think they could be covered under the common vested rights, period. I mean, you, you have rights. If we change the subdivision ordinance, and I believe that you're doing me a disservice by making me comply with it, then I can go to civil action and say why I believe that. And if a judge says yes, you've got a case, then he can go do his thing. If a judge says no, then he's definitely...
Planner over in Henderson County, I talked to him today. What they do is, he says, I don't say, he said, if somebody comes to me and we change his own ordinance, he says, I don't tell them that they have common law vested rights. I say, I recognize, he says, I recognize their common law vested rights and tell them they can proceed based on using those four criteria that's outlined in the common law vested right. And that's just in writing for them. Now, if they didn't have that in writing, like we don't have that in writing, the Henderson County Planning Director also told me that you can, you can grant, he said, before he went to Henderson County, he was granting common law vested rights administratively when they weren't even spelled out in an ordinance anywhere.
That's my point exactly. I mean, if, if you can go ahead and take care of yourself with the common law vested rights, and I'm assuming that any new subdivision, any new subdivision that comes online now has to comply with the ordinance, period, because the ordinance is in place.
Yeah, part of my system starts today.
Yeah, the ordinance is in place, okay? But let's just say I've got a subdivision and it's coming under this ordinance, and in two years we change yours. Well, there, there's where your small vested right issue might come in, and common law vested rights will cover that. I'm not sure we need to be, and this is just my opinion.
Well, I think it'd be a good exercise for you.
Yes, sir.
It's a work in our way through, anyway, you can make this.
Yeah, I agree with that.
The clearer you can make it, the better, because otherwise you'll spend a lot of your time in court.
Do you have any vested rights issues that the city law, kind of stuff?
We've got it spelled out. As a matter of fact, in the old, in the old zone ordinance, you had to specifically request that, that what you were getting approved had vested rights. I'm not sure we need to be, this is my opinion.
Well, I think it'd be a good exercise for you.
Yes, sir.
I'm working my way through it, and we can make this.
Yeah, I agree with that.
The clearer you can make it, the better it is, because otherwise you'll spend a lot of your time in court.
Do you have any vested rights issues at the city level? County office stuff?
We've got it spelt out, as a matter of fact, in the old, in the old zone ordinance, you had to specifically request that, that what you were getting approved had vested rights. If you didn't do that, you didn't have.
But how do they prove it, Mike?
That's the big.
Well, because it's, it becomes part of that approval. It becomes part of that approval with, with this, with the vested rights are granted, with this subdivision was, has drawn, and at that point, as long as he follows that draw, and that's recorded, then, the future ordinance is, or future ordinance changes will not apply to that subdivision, period. But there has to be a vested rights statement. That's the way it was in the old, so I think we carry that through.
Anyways, maybe you will be talking about it next month, I'll thank you afterwards. You're on, Alan.
No, we're not. Is that the only? Yeah, we're, we're.
The vested rights. What are you talking about, on the vested rights? Research I did on it was an April attorney.
Well, I mean, the whole, the board should calm down, you all feel the same way, a lot of us do, that we need legal representation when we're making some of these decisions?
I think especially, maybe you don't have to have an attorney here every time, but, you know, there's just so many issues that are, love them out there, I think, and we don't have, generally don't have anybody to call on, like you.
The vested right issue, we need a attorney here, we need to clarify that, we, we have to have a attorney for that. What I would advise, Mr. Chairman, the planning board, if it becomes a certain tone, it's one thing, just keep postponing, postponing, we're gonna be in the suburbs. We just want starters to come back twice.
And Jake, is there some aspect we could review now?
Uh, that'd be up to your planner and chairman, I suppose, I'm just making a recommendation.
We got a whole folder full of stuff. We got a whole folder full of things.
Yeah, I mean, if we need to, if we need to move on, we can jump over this, and then come back to it, if we can't get somebody here for the next meeting, there's no sense to, to hold everything if just one issue results.
Derek, why don't you, why don't you see if you can get the proper, the proper papers here for that, maybe if not, we can send, you know, a little diagram, potentially we can, and ask. We just thought on the, if it's a change, we can talk about, starting with the property bombing, discuss, and that, we should, by our time, maybe, 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 maybe we can go forward with that.
I think, that, that, Mike mentioned surety bombing, I think that's another thing that attorney absolutely needs to be here for surety bombing.
No, that can be pretty simple and direct, I mean, that's, if you're requiring a bond when you set standard on what that bond's supposed to cover, and how much it costs that's supposed to cover, and then the renewability of it, it's fairly standard bond, because we've got that, and I think the county's is the same, it's only forty-five percent. The one thing that we did was, we, we deleted the, the early release, because we found as the subdivision goes through, and then they release portions of the bond based on the work done, the price is getting higher and higher and higher, and then all of a sudden, there's actually nothing left, and it's cheaper for him to walk away from the project and let the, let the town or the county finish the paving on the strip, because he doesn't have enough bond, I ran into that a couple times in another state. No, there's no releases that bond is sold.
To its being.
Until, until a project's finished. Because he's buying an insurance policy, it says he's not, he's not, he's not actually, he's paying insurance premium on that, he's not, he's not tying that kind of money up in the bank, because you get a bond for a lot less.
Do we have a local bonding agency in Lake County, or Nashville?
Most, most of the banks will provide that. Where you're getting your construction loan, they'll bond you about a certain amount of money, or you, they will direct you to a bonding company where they've worked with, and that bond, then, you give them notice that they cannot, they cannot cancel that bond, or at least thirty-day notice to, to you as the, as the recipient of that bond, that is guaranteed, and that bond can be forcibly renewed.
Would it help to have somebody talk about surety bonding, I mean, an expert come in and give us a presentation on it?
I mean, yeah, if you're, if you're, if you're nervous about the work, yeah, probably get, you could, I think the county attorney could advise you on that, I mean, that's a, that's a basic legal issue, it's not, it doesn't require a special attorney.
The, I'm gonna be getting a horse here, but when we get to that point, the only issue that I think the planning board is gonna have is that, where's that at, a hundred twenty-five percent of projected cost is what bond is, they have provided, is the burn myself, but actually how the bond is, is written out, the requirements for it, the agreement is just a policy made between the attorney, county's attorney, there. And then we're sure that.
Yeah, if you wanna release someone, but I would suggest probably not plus fifty percent, if you wanna release, or not more than fifty percent.
Tails release anything.
Yeah.
Which is not, surety bond is a policy, I'll get that from one side.
Now, they can put cash up, they can put cash up, but they're.
Literally.
What, the county?
Anyone except for the county.
No. So, on your take, you just come on to, like, your policy on the job, that's important.
What kind of problems have the planners handled, and what's your response? Well.
Jimmy?
Well, if the guy, if the guy goes.
No, we're, we're.
I mean, that's what we're doing here, we're looking at problems that have really ordinance and trying to solve.
We're, uh, right now, we've got, I mean, we've got a bond, we've been involved with some bonds, and there's just a few, I would have to go back to my office and sit down and try to look at that.
But, uh, yeah, I mean, a big question next, when we get really on the subject, you know, we're looking to try to solve problems with you, and Lamar, and people sitting in the fields, and we're not really looking to go over the whole subject again.
Right, right.
So, it would be better if we just knew what the problem was that you were being dealt, so we can understand what.
I think all it needs to be established is just a protocol of how we do things, instead of just issue a bond, you know, boom, 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 what, what's the steps in front, the back, and that, you know?
Things we'll get into in the future. Can I say, Alan, you know?
I would, just speaking from my own view, I, I would like to be, being a member of the planning board, I'd like to go through the steps that a developer would go through, so I can feel what they're going through, and what their issues are, and is it relating to helping them, is it gonna hinder them, is it protecting the citizen, is it protecting the county? I mean, we have all those issues that we gotta look at, so, and I'm, and I just did a small subdivision, um, for lots, and I learned a lot, I mean, that's the first one I ever did, and I learned a lot about that.
But you're the last.
Well, it's, it was a lot more than I thought, but, but, you know, we sit here, and we try to do the right thing, but you have to experience this stuff to really get empathy for it, so, I think, how you all feel about having somebody come in and just do a little quick presentation on surety bond?
Could that be just saying, if we're having a county attorney, we can go to those things.
You can't get the attorney line to, tell us what we're gonna be closing on.
I'll let you know in the.
Yeah, and then we'll be prepared, or should be.
And Derek, were you suggesting we might not want to wait a four-month?
For Jack next week, or by now.
I mean, I think if we get this thing down, we need to start going back to meeting twice a month.
I don't have a problem with that, except for December, I'm gonna be gone a lot.
Well, December's a bad month, to me.
We might make four times if they skip it.
Starting the local, at least.
Okay. We'll start it as first of the year. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I've got several things to do. One thing, y'all need to be thinking about, you know, after the first commission, about surrendering the tree, is when y'all have it, so, I'll be sending you a question, like, Mark said, you get that, so, if it's in December, or January, or February.
Last year.
So, y'all need to, let me know, once the, 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 the construction, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna agree today.
When did we do that last year?
Was that this February?
It's February. February's probably a high month, for most folks, so.
Are we having a voting meeting this summer?
Yes.
That's what, that's what you're talking about, like, right, attorney do.
But we'll make sure, I mean, what data we give an attorney here before he's decided we're gonna have that, so, very nice.
That will be on, uh, I'll sit here.
Thursday's the fifteenth.
So, I work for everybody? Anything else you wanna talk on the subject?
All right, I guess we're waiting for Alan to make the moment, thank you, anybody got a second?
Yeah.
One second, all right. Thank you all for coming, appreciate it.